We're going to call to order a regular session meeting of the East Hampton School Committee. Thank you for joining us in person and remotely. We're going to roll call in. Mayor LaChapelle?
Here.
Linda Markey?
Here.
Eric Geyet?
Here.
Ben Hershey?
Here.
Sam Hunter?
Here.
Megan Hardy?
Here.
And Laura Scott present. You guys, thank you. We're going to begin with announcements. The first is correspondence.
I do have several pieces of correspondence to report. And I'm going to summarize because we had some back and forth with several folks. So first, we have correspondence from Ben Ewing, who was following up from his public speak comments during the last meeting. He sent some of those graphs that he had been sharing with the group. And also just following up on his requests related to MCAS results, particularly, do we have goals? And what are those goals for each grade level for improvement? And asking us to take that into consideration in the superintendent search, in particular, the questions that they're asked. We had correspondence from Owen Zarrett related to issues surrounding antisemitism in our schools. And a series of emails going back and forth, working on various components of who would be involved in doing this work. And I will update, I think during the collaborative update later, that there has been some work in that area. So I will give you the results of that then, or at least the ongoing results. We were also emailed the Massachusetts Special Commission on Combating Antisemitism survey. The flyer that I saw that was sent out to the district earlier today. So again, encouraging folks who are watching to, if you have thoughts, check out that flyer. And there's an email address on the flyer to send thoughts to. And finally, we had a couple of correspondence back and forth with Leah Ewing, talking about some particular issues at the Mountain View School Council. Particularly related to a survey that just went out to families, including some questions around if the raw data could be accessed by school council members. Why name information was collected versus being anonymous. And then further advocacy to keep more representatives at the middle school level.
Thank you. Okay, okay. One other note, I did receive under correspondence several personal queries in the past several days. Expressing some concerns post-election and how it would affect our work and what our viewpoint was. So I'm just going to say this briefly, that this is a political body, but not a partisan body. And that our work, as always, will continue. We will, under the auspices of policy finance and superintendent management, continue to support, protect our students, staff, and school community. And "in no mountain high enough," I believe, is how the phrase goes. So we look forward to the hard work ahead. We have an illustrious substitute for our student rep tonight, Walter Baker. Proprietor of Walter Bakes. I will throw that out there for you too. No? Okay, never mind. Don't worry about it. Thank you so much, Walter.
All right. So hi, everyone. I am Walter Baker, and I'm filling in for Asta Patel, who couldn't make it here tonight. So first on the list, our student council advisor would like us to once again enunciate the purpose of the student council. And in the student council, our main purpose is to create a good school community where everyone feels welcomed, heard, and content in school. And to do that, these are some of the things that we've been working on in the last few weeks. There's no list. In the last few weeks, we have been wrapping up analyzing homecoming, profits, and all of that. That turned out really well. We had a spirit week and a pep rally, also very great. Last Friday, we hosted the first kids' night out of the year. And I just got a, yeah. And profits from kids' night out was about $1,000. So that's really good for a first churn out. And then, right now, we are working, our service and charity committee is actively working on planning the annual Thanksgiving food drive that we hold. This year, we are once again doing the Feather the Teacher contest. So students and staff can bring in a canned good, non-perishable item. And for each non-perishable that somebody brings in, they put a paper feather on a picture of the teachers that chose to participate in that. And then at the end of the designated period, the day before Thanksgiving break, the teacher with the most feathers is going to wear an inflatable turkey costume for the whole day at school. So, yeah. We're also working on planning a winter carnival. Last year, we did one of those, and that was really good, you know, to get, kind of like just school bonding and getting everybody together. And improving the overall climate in East Hampton High School. And this year, the winter carnival will be on December 20th, which is a full day. We're also doing a spirit week before Christmas break or winter break. And we're planning for fundraising for Special Olympics of Massachusetts. For the polar plunge that participating members of the student council will be doing in Hyannis during the three-day spring conference.
Excellent. You'll be staying, Walter, at the same hotel that we just came from, that I myself visited as a student council member in high school. It's full circle.
Full circle.
Yeah.
Can I just jump in? And I just want to say, I heard from several parents about the kids' night out. And it was a huge hit. People seemed to really enjoy it. They really loved being able to drop their kids off at a safe place, get to know some of the high school students, go out for a little date, and then come back and pick them up and support the school in the process. So thank you so much for doing that. And I know there is interest if you guys ever want to do it again.
Yeah, fantastic. A note to the public, if you're following the agenda that was posted, we're going to do public comment next. Immediately following that, I'm going to move up the superintendent search update. There are members of the search committee with us tonight to do the presentation of finalists. So out of respect for their time, we're going to go right to that after public comment. With that said, if there is anyone in person or remote who would like to share their thoughts, please raise your virtual hand. We're going to give that just a minute, just in case. Technically, I have to sit here for a minute, literally, for 60 seconds. That's right. Okay. Seeing no public comment, we are going to close public comment for this meeting and move to the superintendent search update with the presentation of finalists. I believe the chair of the committee, Hannah Sullivan, is presenting tonight. Thank you, Hannah.
It is an honor to stand before you on behalf of the East Hampton Preliminary Superintendent Search Committee as we take an important step forward in shaping the future of our school district. As we all know, the role of superintendent is crucial to the success of our students, educators, administrators, and the entire community. A superintendent is not only an administrator, but a visionary leader who helps steer our district towards excellence, fostering an environment where every student can thrive. We ask you to consider Michelle Bosch, Cynthia Kennedy, and Mary Jane Rixon for the position of superintendent for the East Hampton Public School District. Each of these candidates brings a unique set of strengths and experiences to the table, but most importantly, they share a deep commitment to our children and the future of our schools. They are ready to take on the challenges ahead, work collaboratively with all of us to ensure that our district continues to be a place of opportunity, growth, and success for every student.
Thank you so much. Hannah, can I ask, do you mind just sharing for a moment your experience on the committee, just for the public, about what your role was, what the size of the committee was, and what you did?
Well, I'm not sure how many members we had. Nine members. And we initially met and reviewed candidates, and then decided which candidates we would interview from there. And then through the interviews, picked the three that we brought to you tonight.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And Liz LeFond is our consultant from MASC. Can you get me the information on those candidates tonight? Excellent, great. All right, wonderful. We are going to move on to the superintendent update, beginning with the MASC/MASS joint conference update.
Before we do that, can I just reiterate my thanks to the committee for putting in all these? I know it's a lot of work to sort through all of this and to do all those interviews and to make these decisions. And we're really grateful that your role sends us three candidates. Just thank you.
Yes, thank you so much.
Anyone else have thoughts? Mayor? It's on here.
Right, always assume the mic is on. You know, similar to Megan's comments, is thank you so much. It is arduous and a lot of paperwork to go through, especially the responsibility and the ultimate outcome for our students. You know, so thank you for making the commitment, keeping the commitment, and the due diligence you performed during this process. Really appreciate it. I look forward to just talking to each one of your recommended candidates.
Anyone else want to buy more in a minute to finish her notes? All right, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
And you're free to go if you don't, or welcome to stay and watch, up to you entirely. Thank you again.
Go ahead, Maureen. Please. So Laura Scott and Sam Hunter came with me. We all went to the MASC/MASS joint conference. And I want to thank Liz as one of the leaders at MASC for putting together a really great conference. We were there from November 6th to the 9th. We were able to participate in a lot of different sections. Some of the sections that we all went to, or different sections that we chose was, for example, really important sections about what's the update about special education law. I went to one of the sessions on vocational school admission update because there's lots of things. Actually, there's a Department of Ed meeting this Friday regarding admissions to vocational schools. It is a big, big topic and a very special one because they want to change possibly some of the admission criteria and the way that students get admitted to vocational schools. So that's something for people to stay aware of. Loved the session on comfort animals. There was a big comfort dog there, and for the first time ever, I met a comfort cat.
There was nothing comforting about that cat.
The cat was uncomfortable.
That cat was angry. It was in a backpack.
And it had no ears.
I missed that.
Was it a Scottish wolf?
It was a Scottish wolf.
Yeah, because it had the ears. Actually, the cat was found in Worcester, Massachusetts, at Clark University, and it lost its ears from frostbite.
Oh, wow.
No wonder. He was so upset.
But they did show the cat being used, like, you know, kindergartners would put the cat on their lap and read books to the cat, and the cat would purr. You can, there are many animals that you can get. I was kind of joking with my finance manager, telling him that you can also have-
Like a Great Dane?
No, miniature ponies. Miniature horses are acceptable as comfort animals. So I'm just, there's a variety of animals.
Don't we have eels?
We have eels.
That, I don't know what happened to the eels, but I'll tell you that that was a very nice session on that. And then there was something that was really important called the dignity index. And it's really, it's very timely because it's all about how we speak and act with dignity towards other people. So there's an index, and it goes, gives example of different statements. And then you can decide, for example, if you say, each one of us is born with inherent worth, so we treat everyone with dignity, dignity, no matter what. That means that there is not really a disagreement. You approach that conversation with curiosity, and you use language that invites dialogue. So there's a whole program on it. But it's basically, if you hear somebody say something to you, there are eight layers of dignity. And you could decide which one they're saying. And then on the back, it tells you how you continue to have good conversation with people. And especially, you know, it's a dignity pledge, and they really want people to talk about dignity and do more to treat others with dignity, not contempt. So it's a timely, it was a timely program to go listen to. We also, on Friday, the mayor came to speak and did a wonderful job. And it was all about post-elections and, you know, what is the climate and the future of education now with the election results. And when I walked out the mayor, people stopped her, said, you did such a great job. It was so helpful to have you here. So it was a great conference. They had great selections. The focus on the whole thing was building a climate of positive outcomes through leadership, collaboration, and trust. And, you know, that's certainly a great subject, and all the different parts of this conference help build up on that. So I appreciate that I got to go. And I got to go with the school committee. And we got to network with other superintendents and other school committees and share processes, procedures, and problem solve.
Sam, do you want to add anything to that, too? You were there.
Yeah, I mean, I would just, I would just say, it was interesting, it was interesting going on Wednesday, the day after the election, like, leaving first thing in the morning and driving to Hyannis to go be with a bunch of near strangers for the next few days. I definitely made some really good connections with some other districts, had some great conversations with some folks from Western Mass around vocational education in particular, and special education, and kind of the impact of the tuition increase for out-of-district placements. I think it's, this is a really weird job that we have. I'm not sure if folks in the public really understand how strange this role is and how isolating it can feel. And it was really nice to talk with some other folks who are kind of also in this role in their communities and kind of sharing ideas about what does and doesn't work, or what has worked in some areas and not in others. I was really, it really gave me a lot of hope for just our ability to continue to work together towards, you know, just our ability to work together for our kids, to be honest. It was really kind of exactly the right place to be at that time, for me, anyway. I went to a really interesting workshop on equity inquiry, which the collaborative offers, and they've done that in East Hampton before. And we talked about kind of the difference between an equity audit and an equity inquiry. They recommended some really excellent books that I then ordered from Amazon, and I've been reading since. That was really interesting. It really made me think about kind of the way that we use qualitative data as well as quantitative data in talking about equity and student experience in our district. And so I'm really hoping to take that especially back to some of the work that we're doing here. But it was, it was a worthwhile use of time, and I'm glad that we were able to make those connections. We really, our division, I forget exactly what number it is, but our local division of school committees had a really good meeting.
So well represented there, too.
Yeah, there were tons of folks from Western Mass out there. It was awesome. Not what you expect to see on the Cape in the middle of a work week. So it was really exciting to see the enthusiasm and the energy that people had. Yeah, glad I got to go, and thank you for the opportunity.
Every single person I met knew Maureen personally.
Yes, that's true, too.
Mayor, did you have any other thoughts?
I was, I was there for maybe half of a day on Friday. And flipping through the conference brochure and the content, I would say kudos to both the superintendent association as well as the school committee association. Liz LeFond was there and a part of the team that put it together. It was, I guess, arduous is my word of the day. Really impressive, just the scope, and also just talking to other educators. Vocational education was a big thing, and that's something that the Mass Mayor's Association is very concerned about. So I'm really interested to hear that. And, yeah, the panel wasn't nice. I mean, it was really challenging. And the questions were, were great, and they were real. And really, all three of us on the panel really had to think about our replies and how to, you know, put them together with the election. But also, some pretty serious impacts we could be seeing from the federal and state government that will, will definitely, I think, make us all on this committee consider, reconsider, and reprioritize what we want to get done. So I'm looking forward to the follow-up from both of those organizations, as well as working with you all to approach what might be coming.
Can I add one more thing? The other thing that was, that came up a lot was the MCAS, the MCAS vote, which had just, you know, the MCAS. So on Tuesday, one of the ballot initiatives was to end the use of the MCAS for graduation requirement. And it was really interesting to sort of watch this unfold in real time at the conference. Because on Wednesday, we were like, when does this go into effect? And then, like, by Thursday, we had a lot more information. And so I was just really excited by the fact that, like, there was really, like, kind of amongst all the school committees, everybody that I spoke to, there was basically universal excitement about this and what it means for students. But also, like, people understood the nuance of it and kind of the ways that we're going to have to ensure that our students who are graduating are ready for life after graduation. And I really appreciated that as well. So there was a lot of excitement and kind of energy around it, even though there were a lot of questions as well.
So we should highlight that that requirement, what that will mean is students graduating this year will not have to pass the MCAS to graduate this June.
Actually, today, we had a meeting with the commissioner, all superintendents did. Again, you know, we were looking for direction. And that vote goes into effect December 5th. So any student that has, after December 5th, has not passed the MCAS, as long as they pass the other requirements, local requirements, can graduate from high school. They are still saying that, right, like, this week, we have students taking the retest, right? And there'll be another retest in March. So our question was, we understand that we're not December 5th yet, so the students need to take that retest that is happening now. One of the benefits is that they will be able to get the scholarship, the Abigail, you know, the Abigail Scholarship, the Abigail and John Adams Scholarship, which basically gives some money towards state colleges for students. So they're still going to be able to, if they take the MCAS, get that scholarship money. And again, the same thing in March. But they are still themselves trying to figure out exactly where we're going with this. But basically, this year, they will not have to pass the MCAS not to get their high school diploma, as long as they pass all the other local. And we did look into our policy booklet, and we did not find that in East Hampton, that we had stated that you had to pass the MCAS. So I don't believe we have to do any policy change on that this time.
Right. Yeah, of course, Ben.
So everything other than graduation requirements is still in effect for MCAS?
Correct.
Nothing changes other than that?
Correct. At this juncture.
I just want to just say, my concern when I talked to the commissioner at the conference is, and they voiced that that was his concern today also, is that students will lose their motivation to take the MCAS.
The motivation they allegedly already broke.
Basically, they were serious about it. My motivation, I mean, serious about it because you can't get your high school diploma unless you passed it. The MCAS is still staying as an accountability test right now for Massachusetts.
On a district level, not an individual student.
So students have to, so districts will be held accountable by the state for student scores on that for accountability. So your underperforming schools and students, and students that might need intervention, and schools that might need intervention, right now are still there. So my concern was that if a district, if the kids don't take it seriously, how can we prevent a district from being considered underperforming? Not because the kids don't know the work, but because the kids don't have the motivation to do well on the test. So that is still something that the state is looking at and trying to figure out, how will we then get kids focused on doing their best on the test? If, in the end, for them, there is nothing except for this school will have high accountability.
Oh, maybe this is irrelevant, but I just, as far as motivation for the test, I think a big factor for students maybe lacking motivation is the fact that they're inundated with this test from third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, ninth grade, 10th grade. Whereas maybe moving forward, that becomes an issue that we bring up about, is this necessary, or can it be more segmented to that kids take it at appropriate times and maybe don't need to take that type of test at that level? Again, just a thought.
I think all of us could talk about this.
I was going to say.
Here's what I suggest. I think that we are going to put this on the agenda for a discussion in January.
Yeah.
Because then, two things, we'll have a little bit more information from the state. I think it is possible that our current governor is maybe not perfectly aligned with our personal views on the MCAS. So we're going to be looking for some more directives from her office and also from the Secretary of Education in the state. And also, what if any federal guidelines may or may not change? There are a lot of items around that being discussed.
Every day is a new adventure.
So we will get to January. We've got a lot going on in January. It's going to be a lot of fun. All right. So anything else from the superintendent update?
No, thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. Business update. Good evening, McBurnier.
Good evening, everyone. So for this month, we got our FY25 local appropriation report update. At this point, well, as of last Thursday when I pulled the report, 35.6% of our appropriation has either been spent or is encumbered. I'm monitoring the FY25 budget for areas to watch and have prepared transfers to be voted on. I think you're going to have to do that in December. The intent was to have it be an action item tonight, but I, it just didn't get on the agenda in that section for whatever reason. So I don't think you can actually vote on it tonight. But in your packet, you do have them, so you can at least look at them before the next meeting. It's, really, the purpose of them is just to clean up budget lines that are in deficit, or to move money into accounts to which some employees have been moved. Every now and then, you got to create a new account for something. And to also cover personnel cost increases with the new contract. Now that the, you know, the contract has been ratified and, you know, is really close to being signed, I know the, they're just typing it up, the final, you know, draft of it and getting it clean for signature. But anyway, I had to move, you know, money to the accounts that folks are paid out of for that. So at this time, the major area that I'm watching is really spending on out-of-district special education tuition. It's not only the cost of the placements, but it's the number of students that, you know, that are in them. And, you know, there's sometimes unexpected situations that occur during the year. And, you know, that is a large concern of mine right now. I don't have a lot of staff savings money at this point. You know, a lot of times, you'll get, you know, a little bit of savings if a position's vacant for a while, or, you know, if somebody retires and their successor makes, you know, less money than they did, or whatever. But I really don't have a lot of that because of the new contract. I mean, what, you know, what it took to afford that in year one pretty much ate up any of that savings that was there. You know, there's some money in Circuit Breaker, but I don't know that it's enough to cover what we need to. It's still early. I mean, you know, I could do a forecast now, and, you know, it could look completely different later on in the year. But a recommendation I would have is to, you know, perhaps before our next school committee meeting, have a finance subcommittee meeting. Because, you know, we're going to need, you know, you need a Q1 update, you know, kind of just where we are. And, you know, what some of the concerns may be going forward. So I don't know. Megan, you and I perhaps can just, you know, chat and-
I'm on it.
... schedule a time.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Next is the FY26 special education tuition rates. At the last month's meeting, I reported a 3.42% increase, but we got an email last week stating that that was, quote, "miscalculated." And the actual amount is 3.67. So they will be slightly more expensive than anticipated. Not quite sure what the, you know, they didn't really walk you through what the cause of said miscalculation was, but something happened. So that will, of course, have an impact, which, you know, as the FY26 budget process begins, you know, that's something I'll be working on. You know, basically, taking a look at the placements that we currently have, applying that 3.67% inflation rate to them, and, you know, trying to figure out what we got a budget for. and, you know, trying to figure out what we got a budget for next year. The process is, you know, it's pretty much begun at this point. I've prepared a tentative timeline with, that I'll share with the leadership team at our monthly meeting tomorrow. I'm in the process of preparing the documents that will be used by them to, you know, do their pieces of the FY26 budget. Salary projections are done for the most part because, you know, now that we have a settled contract, it's a lot easier to do that for the following year. And then, you know, I'll be setting up meetings with principals and directors pretty soon to kind of, you know, go through stuff, look at their staff lists and get them the materials that they'll need to submit to me right after the new year. So we can really build the first iteration of the FY26 proposed operating budget. Does anyone have any questions or should I move on to the personnel report? All right, personnel report for October. We had, you know, quite a few new hires, couple pair of educators, two special ed teachers, the special education coordinator, the long-awaited speech pathologist, and a substitute registered nurse, which is, you know, that's a good person to have for when your nurses are out because it's hard for buildings to run without them. We had one separation during the course of the month, a special education teacher at Mountain View. But our current vacancies list, you see, it's, it's really dwindled. A lot of what you saw there in the last couple of months has now been built. So we do have a special ed teacher at Mountain View that's still vacant and we still do need a lunch supervisor. I, I say it every month, I know it's been advertised in various locations, but they just have not been able to find someone yet, so.
Can you, what are the, is this, give me a brief overview of this lunch supervisor position, like.
They basically, they're, you know, essential lunch monitors. They supervise lunch and recess. You know, they, they work two and a half hours a day, just during the lunch period. They, you know, they're in the cafeteria. I'm assuming that they are charged with some of the cleanup of the tables. I've never actually watched that, but I'm thinking back to when I was a principal and what my lunch supervisors did. They would also accompany the students outside at recess, so there's supervision out there.
Can I make a suggestion? Can we send a blast email out to all the Mountain View families? Just making them aware, there's, Verywell might be somebody who has that availability and just isn't aware, like isn't actively looking, but like.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a two and a half hour day, part-time job, five days a week, except for half days.
Nothing else has worked, so I might as well try it.
Yeah, they don't, they don't work on half days because there's, you know, there's no lunch period. But in any event, I, you know, I think we can coordinate with the folks from Mountain View and give some sort of.
Who does that? Who would send that out?
Blast email.
Jean? Should I tell Jill? Jill?
We could probably, I'm wondering, should we probably, Jill could send it out in the family newsletter, but we could put it on the website, have Jean put it on the website. What if we do both?
Yeah, do both.
Maybe throw a Facebook post.
Yeah, put it up on social media, too.
Or X, if we have an X channel, I don't know, I'm not on X, so I don't follow that.
All right, perfect. Thank you very much.
Any, any questions before?
Questions about finance personnel?
I think I scared everyone else away in the audience.
There you go.
You say, you say business and everybody gets a little.
You know, if you have any questions about the proposed transfers here, you know, before the, the next meeting, you know, feel free.
If we are going to pass those tonight, if need be, we'll pass them again in December. They were attached with the packet and so I believe we have the purview. We'll take a motion and we'll pass them tonight and I will double check tomorrow with that expert, I believe it's fine.
Okay, I mean, I mean, if, if it's an issue, it can wait till December. I mean, it's not like an emergency.
With the packet, with the agenda that went out, so should be fine. Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. School committee discussion, do policy subcommittee update, Sam, do we have one?
We have not.
Okay. Finance, Megan?
Sorry, hold on, let me read the discussion.
Sorry.
Which seems like one I should be able to just multitask, but, and the time's running. Okay. The big buildup for, we have not had a meeting, but I was just directed that we should definitely schedule a meeting. So I will schedule the meeting and we will meet and then next time we'll have an update.
Yeah, if we could meet by like the 10th of December, that should give us enough time to prepare whatever comes through.
We have a meeting.
No, so our next meeting will be December 17. And then we also have something scheduled for December 18, just in case we do not feel comfortable taking a vote on the superintendent that night. So the, the meeting on the 10th was canceled and so the 17th and 18th are on the books. That opens up a slot for potential finance. For policy. I'm sorry, finance is what I meant to say. Finance is what I meant to say, I'm so sorry. Yes. We were thinking on the same. You're totally correct. Awesome. Okay, CES update, Sam?
We are meeting the day before Thanksgiving.
Perfect. Have fun. Chair, when I can give a small update of the work I'm doing. Yes, that would be perfect. Go right ahead, yes.
Okay, so there's still not all that much to update folks on, but just so that everyone on the committee is aware, I have met with, well, I guess we met, I met with the Equity Steering Committee, start there, and just sort of had some discussions around anti-bias training, issues of discrimination, you know, how this is sort of all addressed in our schools and to sort of.
And anti-hate.
And anti-hate and just sort of bringing me into the fold, which was a very generous offer of them to allow me to come to the Equity Steering Committee. Thank you, it was really a lot of good work that is happening in that committee. And as a result of it, I was able to sort of coordinate with the collaborative and they have been incredibly helpful and with the sort of blessing of the Steering Committee and leadership. We have met a couple of times around potentially developing a really clear response to bias incidences protocol and then some training that would go around that. Certainly, nothing is set in stone and meetings are ongoing, but I wanted the, you all to know that those conversations are happening, the collaborative is being incredibly helpful and so is the district at the Equity Steering Committee level.
That's awesome.
Yeah, I think it's going to be really good work. It's not that we don't do any of it, but it's always, always beneficial to have really clear protocols around that and to make sure everyone knows what those are. And that includes not just people within the school district, but the community, right? So that everybody feels like a level of base, you know, comfort, that there's a, a way that this stuff is dealt with.
Right.
And that's really just work that's, again, has been ongoing with this committee, but bringing it out.
More is more.
More is more.
Any other comments on those? None, we're moving on to action items. Megan, are you, do you want me to do these?
No, I can do them.
Okay.
You're concerned about how I can write.
Yeah.
No, I can do it. Okay, I have a motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated 10/17/2024 in the amount of $387,141.75.
Can you get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sam. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you, Eric.
Took me a second to remember.
Motion carries.
He was worried for a second. Okay, motion to approve the school payroll dated 10/17/2024 in the amount of $691,080.92.
Can you get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sam. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you, Eric.
Can I do a point of order real quick?
Yes.
Is this, this isn't what Nick brought, right? Are we doing that separately?
Correct, so there will be ongoing, it was not listed on the agenda, but there is the last motion that I've directed Megan to make will be for that list. And it will not be enumerated, it is just simply going to be a motion to approve the FY25 budget transfer as listed in this.
Sorry, just wanted to make sure we didn't miss it.
Yep, perfect, thank you. Go ahead, Megan.
Motion to approve the school committee regular session minutes of October 22nd, 2024.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Sam. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries?
I abstained, I wasn't here.
Okay. Thank you, Megan.
All right, motion to approve the MBS out-of-state field trip request to New York City for May 28th and 29th, 2025. And we had information in our packet about that. And I believe this is our, the yearly eighth grade trip to New York City.
I think this is a somewhat newer trip. It used to be a part of the curriculum to travel to DC.
There you go.
And that halted during COVID and I think this is baby steps moving back toward a replacement for that.
That's great, this is.
This is entirely speculative on my part.
I have a question about that.
Yes, go ahead, Linda.
So it shows here what the cost per student is. Are there anything for students who cannot afford that?
I have no information about that.
That's a great question.
I will tell you that the eighth grade trip, there would be like some fundraising, but kids had to pay to go.
Okay, I was just curious about that.
And I think, you know, yeah.
It's a great question.
I will make a call to Meredith tomorrow just to get some further detail on that and see if there's anything if they're not currently offering it, if maybe we could make a request on their behalf to help or something.
I'd just like to, you know, get that on record or at least look into that because I, you know, I think that's very important.
And just for the public to understand.
About equity, I think that's an important part of equity.
It's, what's listed on our request form is the cost per student of $549 each. And, and we are told they are making monthly payments. Which is cost savings from the DC trip, but still not something everybody can access.
I, I feel like I remember this being a, supposed to be like a more cost, a more cost-effective trip.
Certainly.
It is closer.
Right.
It's expensive, though, but yeah, I would love to hear an answer on that.
So we have a motion and a second. This is discussion, any further discussion or questions? Okay, we're going to call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries?
All right, and I am adding in a motion here. And my motion is to approve the fiscal year '25 budget transfers as specified in the attachment included in the packet prepared for this 11, 12, 24 school committee meeting.
Can you get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sam. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you, Eric. Motion carries. Okay, everyone, our next meeting dates, we will definitely be meeting on December 17. We have also scheduled a meeting for the 18th because the 17th will be the day in which we will have our public hearing, welcoming public comment about the interviewees. So we have three finalists who were named earlier tonight. Just want to let the public know that the week of December 2nd, on December 3rd, 4th, and 5th, the, there will be representatives from our district in East Hampton to visit the candidates' home districts where they currently work. And then the following week, on December 10, 11, and 12, those will be the big three dates for the community. That's a Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. Each of those days will host one of the three candidates. It will include site visits to all of our school buildings, to our central office. There will be meet and greets in the evening and then a public interview for each of those candidates. So those dates again are December 11, 10, 11, and 12, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. The following week, December 17, we'll be having a, a school committee meeting in this room where we will invite, and we'll have an extended public speak to hear the public's opinions on the interviews that they have seen, the meet and greets, et cetera. And then we will open the discussion with a potential for a vote that evening. I want to make clear that we reserve the right if that meeting runs very late and folks are tired or there is just need for further discussion or thought. We have also booked this room for a meeting the following day on the 18th. So we expect to make that decision either the 17th or 18th of December. Any other questions about that? All the details of the 10, 11, and 12 will be made public, I would say, next week sometime, likely by the beginning of the middle of next week. It will be on our website. I will also make sure that we send out a blast email to all the families, just letting them know which candidate on which day and which time these specific events will begin and end. No other questions? Entertain a motion to adjourn?